I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lacks.
Here.
Mrs. Reese. Mr. Seeler. Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I forgot to hit my gavel, so I'll do it now. Okay. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date time and day place posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided by the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board that videotape meetings are not edited, and individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, and welcome to one of our absolute favorite nights of the year. Honoring your students and their accomplishments. We are not as proud of them as you are, I don't think that would be possible, but we're a close second. They have done incredible things, and it is our pleasure to highlight and spotlight those things tonight. But before we do that, we have another highlight of the evening, which is our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Becker. Good evening, everyone. The administration is working hard to schedule student sections for next school year with the anticipation of increased student growth resulting from continuing enrollment over the summer. As of today, all projected class sizes comply with Board Policy 2312 and its associated regulation on minimum, optimum, and maximum class sizes by grade level. This policy and regulation, as well as others, can be found on the district website under the Board of Education tab and further bylaws, policies, and regulations. And the reason I put this in my report tonight is the principal of Central Elementary School and I had a meeting with concerned parents yesterday about some information they found on Facebook that we were going to have class sizes in the fourth grade for next year of thirty or more, and that is not true. We have planned for class sizes that do not exceed the maximum established by the Board of twenty-five without additional resources in the classroom. And we continue to watch every single time we enroll students to see if we add new sections to manage those class sizes, so I just wanted to assure the public of that. Moving on, today, East Brunswick High School hosted their inaugural Instant Decision Day Job Fair. Over one hundred high school students applied for, interviewed, and were offered positions of employment from local businesses today. The high school counseling department led by Supervisor Luis Soltana coordinated this event with local businesses to provide a venue where students were able to utilize their career readiness skills to secure employment for the summer months. I am proud to announce that East Brunswick High School was recognized by NJ.com as one of the top fifty New Jersey high schools with the best SAT scores. The high school's average SAT score is twelve-hundred-and-thirty-one. Nicely done. The district recently tested the use of bi-degradable lunch trays. The performance of these trays will be evaluated, and the results will be used in the development of a plan to reduce the district's overall carbon footprint. Central School celebrated its first Maker Day on Friday, June seventh. The students were excited to share innovations they created with parents and members of the school community. This was a culminating event to celebrate a year's worth of learning about the design process. It was a special day for the parents, teachers, and the students who eagerly presented and demonstrated their projects. On Monday, June tenth, the annual Student of the Month Breakfast was held at Hammerhill Middle School, a positive behavior support in schools sponsored event. The students and their families were treated to a breakfast celebration. Students were nominated by their teachers throughout the school year for demonstrating values represented by the PBSIS model: Be ready to learn, be safe, be responsible, and be respectful. Along with President Becker, I had the pleasure of attending the Senior Awards Night on Monday, June tenth, right here in the high school. Over six hundred awards were presented to our graduating seniors for excellence in academics, athletics, the arts, and citizenship. Along with members of the Board of Education, I attended the High School Athletic Awards Banquet held on Tuesday, June eleventh, at the Grand Marquis in Old Bridge, and approximately one hundred and sixty-five awards and almost eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in monetary scholarships were presented to our student athletes. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the many individuals and organizations who so generously sponsored awards for both the Senior Awards Night and the Athletic Banquet. The East Brunswick Education Association and the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association, in conjunction with our Joint Retirement Committee, planned a district-wide celebration for all East Brunswick Public School retirees at the estates at Farrington Lake last night. This year, we have twenty-eight retirees from a variety of positions, and we wish them a wonderful retirement. This year's summer reading program, in coordination with the East Brunswick Public Library, is called "A Universe of Stories." The program will have separate challenges for children currently in grades kindergarten through fifth as well as sixth through twelfth. For the kindergarten through fifth grade club, students will read for twenty minutes for at least twenty-five days to earn a free book. In addition, there are twenty summer learning challenges, ranging from video-recording yourself, reviewing your favorite book this summer, to writing a thank-you note to someone who is kind to you. If children complete fifteen of the twenty of these challenges, they can earn another free book. The prize is for teens or gift cards. More information will be available soon on both the East Brunswick Public Library and district websites. The program will begin on June twentieth and continue through August tenth. The research is clear: children who have access to and read books and other texts they choose will prevent the summer slide, so make sure that your child has access to texts they want to read this summer. East Brunswick High School final exams will continue tomorrow, June fourteenth, and will end on June eighteenth. Churchill exams begin tomorrow, June fourteenth, and will end on June nineteenth. Exam days at the high school in Churchill will be single-session days. All students will have single-session days with no lunch on Wednesday, June nineteenth, and Thursday, June twentieth. High school graduation and the last day of school for students is Thursday, June twentieth. Graduation will take place at the Cure Insurance Arena in Trenton at eleven a.m. So as we approach the end of another successful school year, I would like to thank the Board of Education for their support and our entire educational community who contributed to the success of our graduates. The last day of school for teachers is Friday, June twenty-first, and I'd like to wish everyone a safe and happy summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. And the Board of Education would also like to thank all of our staff, our support staff, and our administrators for another terrific year. And also to all the parents. Thank you for partnering with us. Thank you for being engaged in your children's academic career. Thank you for caring. Couldn't do it without you, seriously, it is a partnership. Oh, yeah, and the students. Great year, guys. Enjoy the summer, and we'll see you in September. And now, for what we are here for tonight. I am going to ask for a motion for Resolutions One through Seventeen for the Student Accommodations. Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hong. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We will now get to the resolutions. Hi, can everyone hear me? Okay, good. Our first resolution. Resolution of appreciation for our 2018-2019 Board of Education Student Representative. Whereas Kirthina Money-Vazken has served as a student representative to the Board of Education for the 2018-2019 school year, and whereas Kirthina has faithfully attended meetings, offered insight as a student of East Brunswick, and effectively communicated the Board of Education's actions to her fellow students, now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Kirthina for her time and service to the East Brunswick Board of Education. Kirthina? You have been an absolute delight.
Thank you.
I never thought I'd say this again, but you actually make me kind of sort of want to go back to high school, and that's a lot. We wish you luck. Whatever you do, come back and visit us. All the student reps promise to come back and visit us, and then they don't? And then they just move to Hoboken and break their mother's heart? That's not you, sorry. Okay. Kirthina, can't thank you enough. Anybody else on the board wish to say anything or merely echo? I believe that Kirthina has somebody she would like to introduce us to.
Should I introduce that here?
Sure.
So, I'm going to be going to college next year, and I would like to introduce our new student representative, because obviously I can't be here to fill in those shoes once again, so...
You could.
No, thank you. It's a new chapter. I'll leave it at that. But I would like to introduce our new student representative, Ms. Rachel Lo.
I'm gonna take a picture. So go ahead, ask for a motion. Go ahead, ask for a motion. I believe that I left out a few resolutions that I was working from an older agenda. Resolution eighteen. Can I please have a motion for that? Moved by Ms. Chu, second.
Second.
By Mr. Hong, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you.
Whereas our PTAs spend countless hours supporting our eleven schools and more than eight thousand students, contributing greatly to their school communities and helping promote a positive school culture, and whereas our PTAs fundraise extensively so they may gift technology and playground equipment, fund mini-grants to teachers, provide scholarships, and so much more, and whereas the PTAs generously arrange for and fund special programs, authors and illustrators, music and dance, history and science assemblies, and workshops to enhance and enrich the learning environment for our students, and whereas all those involved in our PTAs are wonderful examples for our students, modeling good citizenship and the importance of doing one share to make the world a better place. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education gratefully acknowledges the incredible support of the PTAs and their dedicated service and devotion to students and staff, namely, Balmoral PTA and President Chris Grove... Central PTA and President Lisa Valino. Chittick PTA and President Anna Daza. Churchill PTA and President Wanda Miller. East Brunswick High School PTSA and President Lisa Clark. Frost PTA and President Jamie Wasserman. And soon to be President's Counsel. Hammerhill PTA and President Wanda Miller. Wendy Miller.
No, here, 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 that's Lawrencebrook. We gave you Lawrencebrook by mistake.
Erwin PTA and President Jamie Lasco. Lawrencebrook PTA and President Carla Caponegro. Thank you very much. Memorial PTA and President Julie Raffano. And Warren Stauffer PTA and President Brian Doan. And be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education extends a very special thank you to PTA President's Counsel, President Lindsay Dobrinsky, who has supported and encouraged the PTAs in all of their efforts.
Two seconds. Sorry, I'd like to acknowledge one person in the room who has been a tremendous help throughout the course of the year. Our tenure together was short and sweet, but I want to acknowledge all of her efforts. She was the liaison between the President's Counsel and the district, Trudy Atkins. Please come forward. Thank you so much. A small token of our appreciation.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you so much. Our next resolution is accommodation for the 2019 New Jersey Interscholastic Athletic Association State Champion in Vault. Whereas following a rigorous competition process, one Churchill Junior High School student won the state championship in Vault. And whereas this selection requires a commitment on behalf of the student that results in many hours of intensive practice, Karina Munoz won the Vault state title with a nine-point-eight-two-five, losing only a little over a tenth of a point in deductions. Her hard work paid off as she earned her state title for Vault. And whereas this honor, a tribute to the student's talent, hard work, and dedication, has brought local and state recognition to our schools, the district, and the community, therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Karina and her coach, Nadine Murray. Karina? And her coach, Nadine Murray. This is a resolution of accommodation for an academic all-star. Whereas a senior, Jonathan Chung, was selected as one of the ten students in the area by MyCentralJersey.com to be recognized as an academic all-star for 2019, and whereas Jonathan was recognized on June ninth by the Courier-News and the Home News Tribune, and they will salute the accomplishment of the ten academic all-stars with a feature story on the program in the front page of both publications, and whereas this honor, a tribute to his hard work, dedication, and a commitment, has brought local and state recognition to our school, the district, and the community, therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Jonathan for this outstanding achievement. Jonathan? The next resolution of accommodation is for the New Jersey Literacy Association Writing Contest. Whereas Sidney Hughes and Lilian Sampson pieces were selected as winners and will be published in an e-document that will be available on the New Jersey Literacy Association website, and whereas this honor, a tribute to their talent, hard work, and dedication, has brought local and state recognition to our schools, the district, and the community, therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Sidney and Lilian and their teachers Lauren Leclair and Diane Cacioli. Sidney? Sidney? Lilian? Lauren? Thank you so much. Diane, forgive me if I mispronounce your last name.
Next is a resolution of commendation to 2019 Future Business Leaders of America, or we call the FBLA. Whereas the New Jersey Future Business Leaders of America is a student organization helping to build an important career in business leadership skills that are necessary in the workplace, and whereas East Brunswick High School's FBLA Club attended the New Jersey FBLA Spring Leadership Conference, an exciting conference that includes both valuable leadership workshops and challenging competitive events, and whereas East Brunswick High School's FBLA Club did an excellent job competing in all areas, two East Brunswick High School students placed first in their divisions, Krish Desai, coding and programming, and Maria Galkin, impromptu speaking. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends the winning FBLA members, Krish Desai, Maria Galkin, and their advisors, Nicole Kenny and Caitlin Shank, for this outstanding accomplishment. Maria?
Our next resolution. Excuse me. Accommodation for the 2019 All-State Wind Ensemble and All-State Orchestra. Whereas following a rigorous audition process, one East Brunswick High School student was among the top student musicians from throughout New Jersey selected to participate in 2019 All-State Wind Ensemble and All-State Orchestra. And whereas this selection requires a commitment on behalf of the student that results in many hours of intensive practices, and they successfully auditioned into the top ensemble for the state, and this achievement culminates in a performance with the All-State Wind Ensemble at the New Jersey Performing Arts Center, and scored highly enough to participate in the All-State Orchestra in November at the NJEA convention. And whereas this honor, a tribute to the student's talent, hard work, and dedication, has brought local and state recognition to our schools, the district, and the community, therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Hannah Lee and her teacher, Director Brian Toth, neither of whom could be here tonight, but we honor them. Now we have a resolution of commendation for the 2019 New Jersey All-State Intermediate Orchestra. Whereas following a rigorous audition process, thirteen students from Hammerhill Middle School and Churchill Junior High School were among the top student musicians from throughout New Jersey selected to participate in the 2019 New Jersey All-State Intermediate Orchestra. And whereas this selection requires a commitment from the students in many hours of intensive practice to successfully audition for an ensemble made up of the top violin, viola, cello, and string bass players in grades six through eight throughout the state of New Jersey. Students had to first successfully pass the regional auditions to be eligible for state auditions. These students performed on May eighteenth at the Community Middle School in Plainsboro, New Jersey. Therefore, this honor, a tribute to the student's talent, hard work, and dedication, has brought local and state recognition to our schools, the district, and community. Therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends these students and their advisors. And I'd like to call Mrs. Braun up. Who's right behind me? Our staff anticipates the Board's every move. And would you please call your students and honor them?
With pleasure. Kalen Chung. Isabella Francisco. Josephine Kim. Allison Lee. Ethan Lee. Matthew Lee. Emma Lynn. Hannah Lynn. Jaya Shen. Amanda Sun. And my colleague, Ms. Sarah Donatelli.
And I will give the certificate to Dr. Anna Braun, their fearless leader.
Thank you.
Parents, this is your night too, so please let us know if you want us to keep any of the students up for another thirty seconds or so to take a picture of them, okay? It's your night. It's your night. Okay, our next resolution, commendation, is for the 2019 All-State Symphonic Band. Whereas following a rigorous audition process, one East Brunswick High School student was among the top student musicians from throughout New Jersey selected to participate in the New Jersey All-State Symphonic Band. And whereas this selection requires a commitment on behalf of the student that results in many hours of intensive practice, and they successfully auditioned into the top ensemble for the state, and this achievement culminates in a performance with the All-State Symphonic Band at the New Jersey Performing Arts Center. And whereas this honor, a tribute to the student's talent, hard work, and dedication, has brought local and state recognition to our schools, the district, and the community, now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Theodore Spielman.
Whereas this selection will be for the Correspondence 2019 NJMEA All-State Orchestra. Whereas this selection requires commitment on behalf of the students that results in many hours of intensive practice, were students from all over New Jersey, and culminates in performance in Atlantic City at the New Jersey Performing Arts Center. And whereas this honor, a tribute to the student's talent, hard work, and dedication, has brought local and state recognition to our schools, the district, and to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Michael Sun.
Com- Competition, competition, I dare anyone to say that. Whereas this competition, sponsored annually by the New Jersey Music Educators Association, recognizes the accomplishments of student composers by providing an outlet for the critique of their original music. And whereas four finalists were selected from the entries to present scores and recordings of their music and be interviewed at the conference that was held in February. Franklin Hanson's composition for Concert Band Syncopation Circus earned first place in the competition. And whereas this honor, a tribute to the student's talent, hard work, and dedication, has brought local and state recognition to our schools, the district, and the community, therefore be it resolved, the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Franklin and his teacher, Mark Perez. Franklin.
Whereas East Brunswick High School student Lucy Zhou and Serena Huang were selected to attend the New Jersey Governor's School of the Science at Dill University, a unique summer residence, residential program for academically talented students. And whereas Lucy Zhou and Serena Huang will spend this summer at Dill University, this intensive summer program brings together some of New Jersey's most talented and motivated high school students in a challenging learning environment, exploring new avenue of knowledge and developing additional skills. And whereas this honor and attribute to their hard work, dedicate, and commitment, has brought local and state recognition to this school, the district, and the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Serena Huang and Lucy Zhou for this outstanding accomplishment.
This next resolution of commendation is for the New Jersey's Governor's School of Engineering. Whereas East Brunswick High School students were selected to attend the Governor's School of Engineering, a unique summer residential program for academically talented students. And whereas the New Jersey's Governor's School of Engineering is a prestigious residential summer program where the students engage in independent engineering projects, Maria Galkin and Krish Desai will present their projects to an audience of peers and professionals, providing an opportunity for the students to connect with professors and professionals in the engineering field. And whereas this honor, a tribute to their hard work, dedication, and commitment, has brought local and state recognition to the school, the district, and the community, be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends these students. Maria Galkin. It's Krish.
Whereas 26 East Brunswick High School students participating in the nationally recognized Rutgers Waxman Scholars Program, in which they focused on the DNA sequence analysis of genes and have had their research published on the National Center for Biotechnology Information Database, which disseminates biomedical information for better understanding of molecular processes affecting human health and disease. And whereas scientists from around the world will be accessing the published research for these, of these students for their own research purposes, and whereas this accomplishment, a tribute to the student's hard work, dedication, and commitment, has brought local, state, and national recognition to their school, the district, and the community, now therefore be it resolved that East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends our 26 students, along with their advisor, Ann Senelli.
Dara Adams. Push Batra. Maria Galkin. Miriam Kudby. Monty Kumar. Sahil Mahatra. Alana Martinez. Samuel Platsman. Trudy Shah. Magna Beckapot. Deshali Umayal. Rachel Zaidberg.
And to their advisor, Ann Senelli.
Whereas the New Jersey We the People 2019, the Citizen and the Constitution Competition, students testified on constitutional issues in simulated congressional hearings demonstrating impressive knowledge of the Constitution, exhibiting the ability to think critically and express their ideas clearly and articulately. And whereas following rigorous preparation, 35 East Brunswick High School students in the Advanced Placement Institute for Political and Legal Education, class placed first in the New Jersey We the People 2019, the Citizen and the Constitution Competition, for the 30th time out of a possible 32, earning the class the opportunity to represent the state at the national finals in intensive three-day competition held in Washington, DC. And whereas this accomplishment, a tribute to the student's hard work, dedication, and commitment, has brought local, state, and national recognition to their school, the district, and the community, now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes these students and their advisor and teacher, Dr. Alan Brodmann.
I'm going to read the names of the students.
And Dr. Alan Brodmann.
Thank you very much.
Turn your faces this way, please. Dr. Vee, get so I can see your face. All right, don't. There you go, there you go. Thank you.
Next is a resolution of commendation to 2019 New Jersey Science League, Chemistry 1 and Chemistry 2 first place. Whereas all public and private secondary schools in New Jersey are invited to participate in the New Jersey Science League. It's a competition that consists of four 50-minute written exams in seven content areas, starting in January and finishes in April. Whereas East Brunswick High School team participated and placed first in the state in Chemistry 1, congratulations. Whereas East Brunswick High School students placed first in the individual competition for Chemistry 1 and Chemistry 2. And whereas this honor, a tribute to the student's motivation, determination, and commitment, has brought local and state recognition to East Brunswick High School, the district, and to the community. Their advisors, Daniel Pike and Karen Poslusny, could not make it tonight, but we have the following students, please step forward. And Alfred Lee.
Our next resolution of commendation, Naval Reserves Officer Training Corps Marine Corps Scholarship. The East Brunswick High School student Salvatore Ficano was selected for the Naval Reserves Officer Training Corps Marine Option Scholarship. He competed at the national level for this opportunity. Out of the hundreds of applicants from New Jersey, one hundred and eighty were selected, and Salvatore ranked fourteenth. He will receive full tuition to Rutgers University and commissioning as a second lieutenant United States Marine Corps upon graduation. This honor, a tribute to his hard work, dedication, and commitment, has brought local and state recognition to our school, the district, and community. We recognize and commend Salvatore for this outstanding accomplishment. Unfortunately, he couldn't be with us tonight, but we still commend him. Last, but not least. This is a resolution for a United States Naval Academy Appointment. Whereas, East Brunswick High School student Saharj Bhaxi was appointed to the United States Naval Academy. And whereas this appointment can only be conferred through a nomination by the United States Vice President, a United States Senator, or a United States Representative. And whereas applying to a military academy is an arduous process, including a rigorous physical test in addition to the academic requirements of applying to college, letters of recommendation, transcripts, and SAT scores. Approximately four thousand candidates receive nominations, but only fifteen hundred appointments are made to the United States Naval Academy annually. This honor, a tribute to his hard work, dedication, and commitment, has brought local and state recognition to his school, the district, and the community. And the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Saharj for this outstanding accomplishment. Okay, and now I would like to invite all the students to come back for one more round of applause, and so their parents can also honor them. Students? No, they're all here waiting.
You might capture a few.
That was the cue.
You might capture some.
And now I'd like to invite all of you. Come back, that way. That way would be good. Yes, down there.
They're halfway to Starbucks.
This is just a moment for you to come up again, your parents to take any last-minute pictures, and one last round of applause. We're then going to take a five-minute recess, so you can continue to take pictures then, too. I know it's a lot of kids. Kids, just move in. Go ahead. Everybody in here, one last round of applause. Okay? Victor, get in there and organize them, please. And now we come to the good of the cause to the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues. To allow for a fair and orderly public comment period, individual comments are limited to five minutes. Members of the public are reminded that this is a public televised meeting, and to protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the board tonight? Please come to the podium, state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ronnie Barron. I live at Eighty-Tall Oaks Drive, Central District. Good evening. Congratulations to all the award recipients this tonight. I will be addressing something discussed earlier this evening. My daughter Sydney is completing third grade at Central next week. I am here as only one of a group of many, very concerned parents. It has come to our attention that there will only be three classes at Central for our children entering fourth grade in September, which is eliminating a section, as there are currently four classes in this grade. This will bring classes to their maximum capacity, and this is not taking into account any new summer registrations. As previously mentioned, a meeting was held between Dr. Valeski and Mrs. Dino and a small group of representative parents yesterday to address our concerns. At the conclusion of this meeting, it seemed that while Dr. Valeski is looking into long-term solutions to this issue, he is satisfied with allowing our situation of twenty-five students in a class with only one licensed educational professional to remain as is. I certainly understand this is in compliance with the addition of support staff, but we did not move to East Brunswick Schools for compliance. We came here for excellence. And with all due respect, we ask that you, Dr. Valeski, and each and every one of you, would ask yourselves if this would be quite so satisfactory if it were your own children, especially considering the taxes we pay here, a fair majority of which is allocated to educational costs. It is widely known that larger class sizes negatively impact students' ability to learn. Our children started in kindergarten with three sections, and a fourth section was added once they entered the first grade year. If anyone in their heart of hearts truly believed that three sections were adequate, no fourth section would ever have been added in the first place. Additionally, we know that at Memorial, three sections have been deemed inadequate, or four sections, whatever their current is, and an additional section is being added in that building. The same holds true for Bound Monroe, where an additional section is being added to degrees class size there. It cannot be permitted for our children to suffer, particularly as they are entering such pivotal years, now switching classes for the first time, and beginning to prepare for middle and upper schools. The damage to our children could be irreparable, and I am certain that this is not something that the administration wants to be responsible for. Very recently, there was an attempt by the administrative powers that be to eliminate some of the arts to double up on math due to poor performance. Luckily, that policy did not pass, and the arts remain intact. However, you cannot make a tremendous statement like that reflecting on poor math performance at the middle school level, and then, less than six months later, backpedal this stance and approve an environmental change that will negatively impact our children's future performance. My husband and I moved to this town specifically for the school district, and I find it hard to imagine that a district as fine as ours could allow this to happen. We parents should not be put in a position to feel like pulling our children out of public schools and having the district fund their charter school educations is an answer, especially given the millions of dollars the district already has to shell out for Hittikva. This is not what anybody wants. Our children need and deserve better than this. They need a fourth section to be added to the rising fourth grade class. Whatever the issue is, it must be resolved. We parents know that you do not want to fail our children, and allowing the numbers to stand as is would be a terrible failure indeed. Thank you for your time. We appreciate your expedient response to resolving this issue and providing our children the education they need and deserve.
Thank you. Ma'am, I just want to clear up one thing. There was a lot of misinformation about what was going to happen at Hammershold. We were never, ever going to eliminate the arts and double up on math, to eliminate the arts to double up on math. It was never going to be that policy. It was a discussion about relooking at the curriculum and perhaps revamping some older elective classes and relooking at our math curriculum, which we will still be doing, but not as a policy, as a global curriculum change that we will make public to the parents as soon as we know what we're doing. I just wanted you to be assured of that. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to reiterate from the meeting we had yesterday, Mrs. Dino and I had with the representative parents, some of whom are in the audience. I suggested that, you know, we continue to look at the enrollment size. We will enroll students over the summer, and everything is on a watch. So right now, we are simply in the first phase of planning. We know what students we have that are rolling up, but we can't anticipate how many students will enroll, and we'll do whatever we need to do to make sure that the resources are in the classroom where the class sizes are appropriate for next school year.
We know you're concerned about your children, and the situation will be watched very carefully. Yes, ma'am, would you like to come up and address the board? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Shannon Searle, and my address is Six Bunker Hill Run, and I also have a child who attends Central. In fact, I have an older son who went through Central, and he's finishing up his junior year here in the high school. So I'm very familiar with the school system. I've lived in East Brunswick for just over eighteen years, and the reason we moved here was for the schools. I really believe everything that Mrs. Ronnie Barron stated was so eloquently put, and I don't want to reiterate what she just said because I don't want to repeat what she stated. But I agree that with Mrs. Barron, that twenty-five students, although it does meet the maximum allowance, I think it's way too many children in one classroom. My son, who is in Central, will be entering fourth grade in the fall. He's had an incredible year with a wonderful teacher this year. He's made a ton of progress, and I would hate to see all that progress be removed and have him regress because there are too many children in the classroom. I don't think it's fair for the students. I don't think it's fair for the teachers, all of whom are absolutely wonderful. We have fantastic teachers in this school system, and it's not fair to either, the children or the teachers. I definitely feel that twenty-five students in a class is just not acceptable. As Mrs. Barron had stated, next year, a fourth grade is a pivotal time in their school career. It's preparing them for middle school. They're going to separate classes and having more than one teacher. I just don't think that it is in their best interest to have such a large class. I must commend, as far as the curriculum, the things that they are doing in the school are wonderful, are tremendous. I mean, the things, the way they teach, it's not just sitting at a desk and taking notes from the teacher. It's very hands-on. I'm incredibly impressed by that. We didn't learn like that when I was in school, and it's wonderful. But if you have so many children in a classroom, that's going to make that type of learning much more difficult. I was interested, it's interesting that I actually have a magazine, which some of you may be familiar with. It's the Top One Hundred High Schools New Jersey Monthly. It comes out every two years, and I was quite surprised that they rated the high schools and in 2016, East Brunswick High School was rated number twenty-five. And I actually saw this magazine, and I was quite surprised that in 2018, it moved to number forty-two. I do believe, and that really surprised me because it is an excellent school system, I do believe that if we continue this trend of moving our students into a classroom with so many more children, that may impact their later years, and I would hate to see that forty-two go even higher. So I appreciate you listening, and thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
President Becker, if I could, I need to set the record straight about the ratings for the high school. And one of the reasons I mentioned in the superintendent's report that we ranked in the top fiftieth percent, or the top fifty high schools with our SAT average, we are being penalized as a district because we are a ten, eleven, twelve configuration. We get penalized because our students take advanced math in ninth grade at Churchill. It doesn't count towards the high school because it's not considered part of the high school. We are being penalized because our eleventh-grade students have met all of the state graduation requirements. Most of our students are taking AP courses, and we are being penalized for, number one, that they don't participate. They're eligible to take the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, which used to be referred to as PARC, but they don't. And so if they don't take the assessment, every one of those students is listed as not proficient, and they are, in fact, in multiple AP courses and don't need to take that assessment because they've already met all the requirements for graduation. So artificially, I have a lot of issues with the rating system, and all the magazines and publications are picking up on what the state does. So I'm a big advocate for what we do. We are doing a very good job, and our high school does a terrific job. We provide a great education. We're the top in Middlesex County, and we're among the top in the state. So I have real issues with the way they rate us, but I can't change that.
It's really disheartening that we feel that we provide the best assessments, and that yet the kids are penalized and the district is penalized in that sense if they don't take the state assessment.
And all anyone has to do is look at the list of colleges and universities our students are going to attend next year, and I think that's a testament in and of itself of the quality work that our staff does and the quality education we provide in East Brunswick.
Just one other thing about that, just so that you don't worry. We have two kids going to Princeton next year. That may not seem like that big a deal, except Princeton has quotas for New Jersey students. They don't, never wanted to be known as a New Jersey school, so they attract kids from all over the world. So there are specific numbers of kids from New Jersey that they will take. This is not the first year, and it won't be the last, where we have multiple students going to Princeton. So it's a testimony to our kids, but also to parents like you, who are so engaged and committed in your students' time here, that you turn out terrific kids. So thank you for coming, and I'm sorry, did any of you others want to speak? I didn't mean to. But thank you so much for coming tonight. Yes, I recognize that lady.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joanne Shemelowitz. I'm the proud principal of Irwin Elementary School Seventy-One Race Track Road. It's with great pleasure that I'm here to speak to you tonight about the year-long initiative of the Students of Irwin School to support Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation. We organized East Brunswick's largest lemonade stand on June first and invited our entire town to participate in this fundraising endeavor. Coupled with our online donations, we raised four thousand dollars in this event alone. This event was a rousing success and a true community effort. Lemonade sales and several fun activities were run by students, teachers, and parents. Donations were made on behalf of our school from both of our local policemen's labor unions and a local firehouse. A local Starbucks donated all the cups and straws, and several small businesses contributed prize packages to be raffled off. Mayor Cohen bought our first cup of lemonade to kick off the event, and local Assemblywoman Nancy Pinkin also stopped by to support the event. But what's so rewarding is that our work has started a small movement amongst our students and families. Since the larger lemonade stand, several of our students have hosted their own lemonade stands and then brought me little baggies with their earnings, then they asked me to donate it on their behalf to Alex's Lemonade Stand. And one of our parents did an online fundraiser with her video gaming community in Europe that raised additional funds for our initiative. Helping our students to understand the positive impact they can have on the world has been at the heart of our work this year, and to that end, as a school, we've raised seven thousand twenty-five dollars to support the cancer research that Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation finances. That amount of money funds over one hundred and forty hours of cancer research. We're proud of our partnership with Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation, and everybody had so much fun that we plan on making it an annual event.
Thank you. That's wonderful.
Congratulations to Irwin.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to address the board tonight? Seeing none? Seeing none, I will close the public portion. I'm going to ask to move the rest of tonight's agenda, when please note, there was an additional facilities item sent to us all by email, so I would like a motion for tonight's agenda. Moved by Mrs. Lacks. Second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion on any items? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mr. Ha.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, with abstention on community programs, item number two. We do have our last report. By Kirtina.
There's nobody to say.
Kirtina, it's been a busy week. Tell us what's going on.
It's been a busy few weeks. So last week, we started off with our annual Relay for Life, but before that, while we were setting up, we actually had various other activities going on. So while we were setting up diligently, we had the fire assembly for dorm room safety up at the high school for all the seniors going off to college, and it was a very emotional presentation, and I heard the seniors received it very, very well. There was also the sophomores and juniors working together in their classroom, doing team-building activities, becoming even closer with their teachers, as they tried to promote this idea of the EBHS1 initiative. So overall, the entire day was full of promoting that initiative that we are EB, we are ONE. I'd also like to mention how successful Relay for Life was. Although I don't know the numbers yet, Relay for Life was a very, very successful event. Imagine a school fair, if you will. A school fair where everyone is exploring the school grounds and having the opportunity to do different activities. For once, students were not looking at their cellphones. Instead, they were actually playing games, like they, some people were playing frisbee or can jam. They were also playing spike ball, and various other clubs also worked together to have their own stands. I remember Save Club made their own flower crowns. Asian Club, I think, did cotton candy. It was like a carnival of sorts, but on a bigger scale. And we also had students walking around the track promoting Relay for Life. Great cause, supporting cancer research. Overall, an amazing event, and I'm very, very thankful for NHS for hosting such a wonderful event, as well as Dr. Vanilla, Ms. Anderson, and Ms. Amatero, as well as the administration. Can't forget about them. We also had the blood drive, and it was announced at senior awards that we had over 100 people donate to such a worthy cause, so that was amazing. And also, senior awards happened this Monday, in fact. We had many, many students who received awards, and on behalf of them, I would like to congratulate each and every single senior for doing such an outstanding job and receiving all of these awards. We also had prom. Prom was absolutely amazing. Tremendous thanks to Class Council of 2019, because they did a splendid job. If you saw any videos, there was actually robots, so it's a blast from the future. I'll put it that way, because prom's theme was the 1920s, and it was a very, very, very well-put-together event. So congratulations to the Class Council 2019, putting on such a wonderful event. And there was a sports banquet, which Dr. Valeski mentioned, and last but not least, final exams are coming up. Oh, not last but not least, final exams are coming up, and graduation is also coming up. And last but not least, I'd like to take a page out of Ms. Becker's book and tell a little story of sorts. So I came into this position, a little girl, well, not really little, I was still tall. But I came into this position not knowing what to do, or what to say for that matter, and Kush sat right next to me and said, "You'll be fine." Dr. Figaro is the nice, Mr. Figaro is the nice one. But I came into the position not knowing what was going on, or what to expect, but after having been here for the past few months, I've been able to learn so much, and grow for that matter. So from the young little girl to the woman I am today, I have learned so much, both in this position and in the school district. And I am so very thankful for the Board of Education and Dr. Vanilla for giving me this opportunity to sit here as student liaison today and graduate in Class of 2019. So thank you very, very much.
Again, you've been a pleasure.
Thank you.
And we wish you the best of luck.
Oh, and before that, I would like our new student liaison, I would like to pass the torch on to our new student liaison, and let her introduce herself.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rachel Lobo, and I'm a junior right now, but I'm just so excited, and I feel so blessed to have this position passed on to me, and you all seem so nice, and you were all so warm and welcoming today. You weren't like scary administration people. And I'm so excited to get to share not only my opinion, but like the sentiment of the school and what's going on at the high school with all of you, and I'm just so excited. I can't wait for next year.
We fool everybody.
I think the one thing she should be excited for is getting the plaque at the end of the year.
Yes. Welcome.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing from you next year, and I'm sure you're going to be a wonderful addition to our group.
Thank you so much.
The two of you have a great summer. We'll see you next week. No? We won't see you next week at graduation?
Oh, my gosh, yes. Oh, my God. Yes, I'm graduating. Yes, I'm graduating.
I already marked her off. Okay, so she's coming.
You can't hold me back. You can't hold me back.
Actually, honey, we can.
Get out, start a new chapter.
We can, but we're not. So like I said, we'll see you next week. You know. Okay, any committee reports, information items? Actually, I have one information item. Just want to share with everyone, I would like to thank again Holly Sarami and the members of the Interfaith Council, who took the time to come and speak to the board at our last meeting. We are very proud and honored to have them as a partner for many, many years, and we look forward to continuing to partner with them in encouraging tolerance and respect for our students and the entire community. And now, anybody else? Committee reports, information items? Go to the clause for the board. You've left us speechless. Seeing none, we do have a need for closed session. Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting. Those items are as follows, the items reflected in tonight's agenda. Length of the closed session is estimated to be two hours. Okay? After which, a public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects. Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. LeWu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? We're in closed session. Thank you for coming tonight.